Thank you.
Next report.
Trustee Lane, you're muted.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought I had clicked on the unmuted. Extended continuity of learning plan, Ms. Masama Ali Bazzi, Ms. Fatni Faraj.
Good evening, trustees, board president, Dr. Maliko. All right.
If I could just say too, I want to thank Ms. Ali Bazzi for her leadership along with Jane and David Higgins. It's that committee, it's a tough, it's a very tough position. And when they accepted it, I'm not sure if they realized exactly all the things they were getting into it, but it's an important committee for us and continues to work, not only with them. You mentioned team trustee Barry, but them, even if the people that aren't on the committee, you know, the administrative team to the teachers team, everyone is contributing and really trying their best to support our students. So we, we thank everyone.
Thank you, and thank you to all the participants. We have such, so many people involved and we're thankful for each and every one. So we have, the Dearborn Schools Weekly COVID Update is available on the COVID Dashboard, which is what Dr. Maliko referenced just very briefly in the beginning of this meeting. The Michigan Department of Health orders that each district's required to publicly post cases and probables. Probables are people that were not necessarily confirmed, but had symptoms and had good reason to believe that it was COVID. On individual school websites as well as notify families and the staff of positive cases within 24 hours. Right here is the, this is right on the Dearborn Schools website, dearbornschools.org. And that's what it, this is what it looks like. And it's updated every Friday. So this was actually updated this morning because of today's meeting, but typically it's updated every Friday.
If you scroll down, you'll see too that she has like the dashboard from Wayne County.
There are links.
Oh, there are links. Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, so there's links. That's, that's fine.
Right here is the Wayne County Dashboard that Dr. Maliko is referencing.
So this was David, Katie, the two, Amy and Carrie put this together. And we had this in place before the law. Now the law says, it just came out that you must report it from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, but we already had it up and running prior to that.
Yes, that was, they were well ahead of the game. So I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint here. School reopen plan, all the questions, we really, our team really tried to capture everything that, the questions that we're getting. Where do you find information? You know, what's the plan to keep people safe and things like that? And so really here's the school reopen plan. And this has links to everything that the school reopen committee worked on throughout the summer. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was visible to everyone or it was able, they were able to locate it. And again, it was David Higgins, president of ADSA, Jane Mazza, president of the DFT Union and myself were the chairs, plus nearly over 80 people. And then a whole bunch of other staff members participated as well. So, oops, I want to go back. Okay, and then the third link here is for the Dearborn mitigation plan. I'm not going to get into too much detail, but it's important to note that this is what was submitted to the Wayne County RISA. It was a requirement. And the mitigation plan is extremely detailed. So I'm not going to go through all of it, but what I will show you on the next slide. Much thanks to Executive Director Fatmi Faraj. She took the lead on this and Shannon Peterson, Jill Choco, Micah Salee and all of our directors as well. So, and the next slide here is the mitigation plan. So this is how the county grades us. And so the weight and the, the measure categories, the different categories that the county is looking at to give us a grade on our mitigation plan. And we earned 96 out of 100. You need over 80 to get the, the green light from, from RISA to reopen, according to the Michigan, or to the Wayne County Health Department as well as aligned with them. And did Dearborn Plan receive the 96 out of 100? And I won't read all the categories, but you can see them on your screen. And then I also just wanted to include just a note here as a recommendation based on some of the questions again that we received from the public is that, you know, it's from public and from staff is, you know, what's the notice going to be when, when the next, when the board decides what our next steps will be? How much notice will we have before we resume in-person instruction? And so this is just a recommendation to provide everyone with at least a two-week notice for different childcare, for our staff's childcare and also for our staff's planning and also our family's planning, really just for everyone's planning purposes. And this came up a few times on social media and then also I was directly asked that question. So just tried to capture that in there. And my response was that, you know, we, I don't know exactly, but we would recommend at least a two-week window for getting our lives in order as much as possible at least. We talked about that. And then the last time we were here, beginning of September, I'm really happy to say that the COVID positivity rate for Wayne County, out Wayne County, not including Detroit, is now 3.6%. The last time we were together, it was previously 5.9%. We still do not have Dearborn specific metrics, but they are coming from the county pretty soon. So we're really excited to have Dearborn specific metrics available soon. We were hoping that we would have them today, but we don't. And then I do want to show that this is our tracker to keep track each week of like what is our, what is the seven-day percent positivity rate in out Wayne County? And so you'll see like the week here and then right here is what is the percentage, percent of positivity in out Wayne County? And 927 to 10.3, 3.6 though. So I think I had 3.9 on that other one. So 3.6 is even better. So we keep track over here so we can see how many weeks has it been below 4%? Or how many weeks has it been, or oh, oh, we got to look out for something, it's creeping up, those kinds of things. So. And then also we have the Dearborn Schools COVID cases. This was just updated. It's important to note that many staff members have come back to work since the end of June when the governor said that we could go back to work, depending on what the position was at the time. And so this has been updated from the last time we met. 27 staff probable confirmed cases, probable or confirmed cases, 18 student. Quarantining due to exposures, 26 staff and 18 students. And at, at the time of our last board meeting, we had three high school teams in quarantine. I'm happy to say that that's not the case right now. So we continue to update this information as well. We did survey elementary parents of the students that are not currently enrolled in the virtual learning program. Here are the survey responses summary. For elementary, it was 82% of elementary parents that took the survey. Again, that doesn't include the parents that already have their kids as enrolled in the virtual learning program that when the district reopens part-time, they are comfortable and willing to send their children to school. For secondary survey, survey results. Oh, I'm sorry, I want to add one thing is that with the elementary surveys that they would be comfortable sending their children, 82% of the people that took the survey with six feet of social distancing. For secondary survey results, you'll see the summary here. 70% indicated that they would send their children with six feet of social distancing. 56 indicated that they're comfortable sending their children if it's three to six feet of social distancing. And 33% said that they will select the virtual learning program if and when the schools reopen.
I had a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
In the surveys, did we ask at all about the parents whose kids ride the buses? If they'd want them still riding the buses to school?
We did not.
Okay.
We considered adding more details like, is your child special needs? Because that helps us with planning. And then we talked about, and then transportation as well and a couple of different things. And then we decided, well, we really just want to gauge where our families and what they're feeling. So we're not going to get too detailed right now because it's not really a commitment from our families yet. But that, that would probably come up soon.
And Mason, I can add to that because I think what we ended up saying in cabinet was that they know the students that are, already have the ability to bus so that FADIA, they could actually send out to those parents that, where the kids that do get bused.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
So it wouldn't be a general survey going to all the, is, that was my understanding what we were looking to do through Mark, possibly to, just to kind of plan for transportation.
Trustee McDonald?
May I ask a question also?
You're muted, Aksan, you're muted.
Trustee McDonald, you're muted.
I have a question about a previous slide. When you said that we wanted to give a two-week window for families to prepare, say that we were to reopen, we gave them the two-week window and in that two-week window, our positivity rate rose or some other factors came along, would, what would happen at that point?
We're keeping such a close eye day to day and week to week. And we would always refer back to the indicators that we shared at the last meeting. And they're also linked to this presentation as well. And just like we did with the learning labs, when we were scheduled to open all our learning labs on September 21st. And then we, we meet weekly to see, okay, well, what's the metrics telling us right now? What do we need to adjust? What's the recommendations from our nurses and also from Wayne County RISA? And we would do that same thing. We would follow that same process. And if we needed to make a change, it would ultimately be obviously the board's decision. But we would provide them with all the details that they would need to make an educated decision.
Trustee Lane?
And at that point, when it, would that two-week be extended again?
We could, we could. I'll just say that we could make the decision to postpone if we look at the data like we did with the learning labs. And we waited for two weeks of solid data. So we didn't just base it on one day. When we did the learning labs, we waited and we have a committee, Jane's part of it, David and Mason and Mike, Salee. And so we didn't rush to judgment. We looked at the data over those two weeks. Once we saw it was clear, then we'd made the decision to open the learning lab. So we could follow a similar process. Now, obviously if it was an emergency, I would call President Barry, just like, and then, you know, just like we did back in March. Remember when we had the whole thing, we didn't know with Whitmore and I was talking to incoming president, Vice President Thorpe and then other board members we were talking to. So we could obviously make a decision in an emergency as well if we felt the data, you know, warranted such a decision. Or, and it may not just be the positivity rate. I'll just mention that we were hoping to get the matrix from Wayne County because we're supposed to get a rating as to where we fit on their matrix that came from the state. And within that, they are looking at not only the positivity rate for the county and we've, David sent it out. There is no positivity rate for the local community. But you do look at local community infection rates within there. The other thing you look at is you look at positive test cases within the school. So that's why every district is different. And there's also the possibility that every school could be different. So you could be making a decision on a school that is different than other schools if, for example, you had several cases that, that occurred. Now, the state defines it as two cases in different households as an outbreak. So if it was two cases, you look at it, but the Wayne County Health Department would also be providing guidance. And they may be telling you, you need to close. So there's several factors and we have to follow their guidance according to the state law. So I would say we would look at the data and we'd look at all those factors when we make the decision, which is exactly what the board did in August and September with our recommendations when we were looking at the data.
Trustee McDonald, it was a very good question, very valid. There's a neighboring district that was supposed to go back in person today. And they had an issue that came up, I'm not going to mention the name. They had an issue that came up Thursday, I believe, that affected their, some students. It also affected their football team, which they had to cancel, obviously the football game. And they did postpone two weeks from today before they start off. So, yeah, that could happen. And I know one of our colleagues, if she wants to chime in, please by all means, mentioned, which I did talk to Dr. Maliko about it. Maybe for the month of October and November, maybe we should go, go back to two meetings a month. Meaning that we would schedule a regular meeting. There's some reports that I wanted to add to this agenda, but I knew it was going to be a long meeting. We couldn't do it. Maybe two weeks from tonight, we can meet again. We'll get to it later on, but I'm playing the seed that maybe we don't need to go ahead and schedule an emergency meeting or something. If we do that, now for the month of October, November only, obviously we won't need it for the month of, obvious reasons, we won't need it in December, but we'll talk some more about that. Thank you, Trustee McDonald, that was a very good question. We'll go to, Trustee Lane?
I'd like to ask to clarify slide number five. It reports there on a cumulative number of 27. I don't know, is that number show up someplace on our website? And are we going to have a number that'll show current versus cumulative cases? Cumulative might not be, I mean, at some point that'll get, could get to be a large number.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
So we made a decision with the dashboard, oh, sorry. We made it exactly for that reason. We made a decision with the dashboard that when you click on the first link, it'll only show the week. I believe, right, David? And then if you want the history, you have to go deeper so you can see the most updated. So it'll only show the week. So when people go and look, it'll show the seven days. Because we agreed with you, Trustee Lane, that, you know, once you get into February or whatever, obviously. But we also wanted to be transparent and allow it. So someone that really wants to go and see it, they can go to the archive link, but it wouldn't be on the current link.
So here's current. This is the current that's displayed right now. And then right below it, click to see more details. Click to see more details. And this shows cumulative.
Lot of information. Trustee Petlicoff?
Couple of questions. On social media, I was seeing that one of the criticisms of the survey was, was that they, they didn't know what the plans were going to look like and they would have liked a, I'm not certain check. Because we gave them a A or B choice, basically. Will you send them back or won't you send them back? And they're like, well, I'm not really sure because I don't know what you're telling me it's going to look like.
Right.
So you got 2,700 responding to the secondary and basically about the same thing, the elementary. How many of these surveys went out? What's the percentage of the response rate? I mean, we have over 20,000 students. I know roughly 5,000 are in the virtual learning. So that group was kind of cut out. I don't know if that was entire families. Maybe they had only kept their elementary out and they still had secondary kids. I don't know. What's the percentage that we're looking at that actually responded?
So who's on, I don't know who's online.
It was 26 for the elementary. It was like 2,700 of the potential for about 8,000 elementary students, a little bit over 8,000. But then take out the virtual and some of the students that are in the record may not have shown up. So they may not have filled it out because they haven't technically been in school yet, even virtually. Even virtually because of, you know, it's a new situation this year with people maybe not even coming. So, but roughly that's a pretty decent response. And I would just say, and I get your point, Trustee Petlicoff, and it makes sense. And I got an email on that too. But we were just trying to get some data that would help guide us, you know, because we know that.
I know it's not perfect kind of thing. But I just want to make sure when we make a decision that we also recognize it's not perfect. It doesn't really give the full picture. 82% out of a little over a third of the parents.
That's exactly a third, which is, that's good for a survey.
Yeah.
It's very good.
But, but, so we're, we're talking, that even lessens more about what the total number of parents. We don't know what the other two-thirds are looking at and, and what's on.
Secondary was about 30% as well.
Yeah.
That was the question I asked for secondary. I think I asked that question for both.
So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we know.
Yeah, I saw that or I read it in a, either in an email or I saw it on social media. The same question about like, how come uncertain wasn't, or, or I don't know wasn't an option? And to be honest with you, we wanted to just gauge the feeling right now because we can plan more appropriately. But it also makes sense to me that the parents that hadn't watched the board meetings or hadn't gone to the, like, you know, the school reopen plan, wouldn't know all the details. Yeah.
The other thing, if I could just mention, and President Barry, you had asked for that survey and I think it was a great move. But we also know that you might have 82%, but whenever we decide to go back or whatever the plan is, not just because of the plan, but because of the conditions, you know that people will change their mind too. So we have to just recognize that that, but that's, you and I talk about it all the time. Everything keeps changing. It's, this is our new world, right?
It's too volatile now to really.
You know, the positivity and everything, you know. So that, we just have to kind of equate that and understand that that may be the case.
But I'm, I'm, I'm still, I just want to make certain that we, we've only got a third of each of the parents.
That's right.
And then you've got a percentage of those, that third, saying, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So we've got two-thirds who we still don't really know where they're at. And so, but the reason I ask that question is because then when we move forward to bring, what, what is the classroom size going to look like? We know that normal classroom size of 28 students and we got 14 and 14 kind of thing. It's still not going to cut it for social distancing in a lot of these buildings. So if I've only got a third who are saying, yeah, maybe I'll send them, are we then cutting the student count even lower? And are we still going to have to provide online services for all those other parents who say, no, don't like the plan? I'm not coming back.
Can I, can I comment? So I asked, so we put a committee together that looked at that in, in the secondary. The elementary they looked at, that, because remember the elementary numbers are pretty low. So if you cut it in half, you can do the social distance, right?
We're in good shape in elementary.
At elementary. The secondary, so if you had two groups, you could do it. Now, at the, at the secondary, and that's why we put, and she's going to get to it later. But we had Shannon Peterson lead the high school group. We had a committee that went through every school. And they looked at how many, and then Fatmi Faraj did the same thing. We had John Leacher, we had Mark Andrews. And that's what I asked them to do about a month ago is because I wanted to know the numbers. So in order to social distance with the six feet, which is required by Wayne County unless you get that exemption through, we have to submit a plan, is that you would have to put them in three different groups for secondary. You couldn't put them in two groups. And there, so it would be an A, B, C cohort for secondary. But for elementary, we could do two cohorts because remember elementary sizes are lower.
And that's if 100% of the parents, not, not the third.
Well, that's the other thing, may not.
That, that, that's what I'm saying is, is it might, this doesn't necessarily reflect.
It's an estimate based on what we think may happen. So we believe exactly right, some are not going to send them no matter what. But we think at secondary, we could do it in three cohorts. You know, I'm not going to mention which districts, but we talked to another district and they're not doing the social distancing, but they are having, you know, the instruction, but they're just, you know, they got approval through the county that they had enough points to do other things. So that may or may not be something we want to do. And I'm not saying I'm recommending that, I'm just saying that's something.
Well, this survey was, was in conjunction with the one, the one caveat, six feet social distancing.
Mm-hmm.
It might change.
That's why we did it. That's why we did it because we heard of other districts that are bringing them back, but they're not, they're, they're calling it three feet, which is really not a.
Social distance.
It's not.
Now, the plan that we submitted, the mitigation plan, the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan that I referenced earlier, it did throw out the plan, plan say four to six feet. And we still got a 96. I just have to say that because that's what the plan says. Yeah.
Two things, Dr. Maliko. I know when you and I spoke about the survey, we wanted to keep it simple.
Sure.
We just wanted to take a pulse of the community to see if we were to gonna start moving forward. What do you think? Just help us here. And on social media, I saw what you saw. Matter of fact, I fielded some phone calls. People wanted, the question was, why don't you tell us what the plan is?
Tell us what the plan is.
Guess what? As of right now, as 8:00 PM tonight, there's still no plan.
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't know. Tell, tell all the people out there, we didn't know what the plan was.
We didn't keep it from you.
Yeah.
We're going to hear from a lot of our constituents tonight. We're going to go into discussion, then we'll put a plan on the table and we'll go forward. Trustee Mosz, you got a question?
Yes, as far as Wayne County considering an outbreak at a school, it's only two confirmed cases.
Two confirmed cases from different households.
And if that happens, then what's the protocol? Do we close the school for how long?
Not necess, you don't necessarily close the school. We would, the nurses would talk to Wayne County and it would depend on the, the circumstances of the outbreak. If is it more than two, is it isolated to a certain area? So they'll do contact tracing and then they'll let us know what we would have to do.
Like it might just be a classroom that gets quarantined, not the whole building.
The term outbreak is kind of a misnomer. It's not like we see in the movies what an outbreak would look like. Two in a school is considered an outbreak in this situation.
Right, yes.
And that's based on the state rules. And that's why we try to clarify on the dashboard saying, look, an outbreak is two from different households. That's all it takes to be considered. So that's why, and it's on the state website. They put it on the state website. So, you know, so it's a good point to, to make. So I mean, you know, the common person would think, yeah, an outbreak is multiple, many, many, you know, that kind of thing.
If you just kind of answer Trustee Mosz's question, the way I understand it is as soon as we get that, you know, we get into the circumstance, it's when we call the professionals, the nurses. Then they talk to their counterparts down at the health department and they tell them what to do.
Yeah.
We don't make those decisions, the administration doesn't make them. It's coming from Wayne County Health Department, correct?
Correct, absolutely. And we're obligated to talk to them and we're obligated to follow their protocol.
And they've been a great help, so thank you very much.
They have, yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
I, actually, it was that Trustee Mead has, wanted to ask a question, wasn't sure if you had seen.
Trustee Mead, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Regarding social distancing and the children, kindergarten, first grade, et cetera. Typically they're in circular tables and there's no Plexiglas division for those children. When they're, when they're on individual desks, it's a little easier to move them around. But when they're on round tables, it seems like it's not going to be socially distanced. I just would like some feedback on that.
Yeah, I would say the reality is when you're dealing with younger kids is that you can set it up and you'll probably have to change how you set up your class. We'll have to get a lot of furniture moved out and other things to, to have room. But then the reality is, we know with kindergartners what's going to happen. They're going to, you know, I mean, it's not like they're doing anything. And Dr. Mead, I appreciate the question is that, that's why the masks have to be worn and the other things as well. We do have some Plexiglas if, for example, a child could not wear a mask. And then we could use, we have some mobile Plexiglas that Micah Salee ordered and we ordered more. We have more coming in, but it's not, you're right, it's not for every, we don't have it for every class. So it's a decision that we'd have to understand that we know that kindergartners could, you know, they're going to be wearing. And maybe they, you know, are they going to be as good at wearing a mask as we are? Probably not. You know, those are the reality of what we're going to be dealing with. But we have a plan. You know, we, we, you know, we submitted to the state and we have options to try to keep the social distance as best we can if, you know, the board chooses that we should come back for in-person instruction. So it's not going to be perfect. We just have to be aware of that, especially with young children. We know, we know that, any children really. But we just got to accept that. We have to accept the fact that.
Help me to understand, the, the first graders and the second graders, are they round tables?
It's, it's typically like one round table in the back of the room that's used for reading groups. We have had teachers inquire, like, you know, can I have a Plexiglas for the round table? We've had that question. And so Plexiglas will be available in buildings for the, the teachers that feel more comfortable with those.
Do first graders have their own desks?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have their own desks.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Mead, they're usually organized in, in like, so that they can, it fosters small group interaction. So they're like set up in, sometimes in fours or they're set up in a square, in a U so they can see each other and they can interact and have small group discussion. So for social distancing, it would be everyone facing the same way, spread apart throughout the room. And so small group interactions would become secondary to safety.
And I assume that most, most kindergarten classrooms, a lot of the kids, they're sitting on the floor. They're doing, I mean, they're not at a chair, table.
The storytime rug and things like that, yeah.
Yeah, so you'd have to, you'd have to have little X's everywhere or circles or something for them to visually guide them, to separate them.
We, I mean, instruction will look different.
Much different.
It'll look different and it just, some of the best practices that we know in a non-COVID, we won't be able to do. We're going to, you know, they're going to have to modify what they're doing. And that is just something we're going to have to accept if we want to have in-person.
You made a good point, Dr. Maliko. You asked, you said about the first graders, are they going to keep their masks on? I fielded a phone call over the weekend and that was a question. Can you guarantee that the first graders are going to keep their masks on? I said, slow down. I'm not only not, not going to guarantee it, I can assure you that they're going to be. That's just going to be another, you know, responsibility on the teacher.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, we keep adding, adding on the teachers, it's another thing. I'm going to have Dr., Dr. Shalasun, Dr. Trustee Mosz, ask a question and then we're going to have Mesa continue with the report.
Just on the whole PPE, have we purchased face shields for the teachers to wear on top of their masks?
We have face shields for those that need it, like in the special education department or others that may need it because there's some medical reason. Now, face shields though are not, do not take the place of a mask.
Of course, yeah. But I'm saying on top of.
But yeah, we do have face shields. Mike, we have several for your department, right?
Yeah, we, we have face shields.
And for others. And for the custodians because they're required to use it when they're doing cleaning.
Yeah, we, we have face shields purchased for some of our special education teachers because masks are an issue for them as well. But I do believe that Mark Andrews also said there are plenty of face shields. And we've been, I mean, for teachers who do ask for whatever PPE, I think we've been very, very. But I do believe that Mark Andrews also said there are plenty of face shields, and we've been, I mean, for teachers who do ask for whatever P P E, I think we've been very, very, we've made sure that they're just comfortable, whatever they have, to make sure that they feel comfortable in-person instruction.
Okay. Thanks.
Isn't Mary?
Oh.
Just, just moving forward.
Actually, Mr. Andrews just talked, they have plenty of face shields.
Sincerely, just moving forward, everybody in the room, please, uh, we do have protocol that we have to follow before somebody else steps to the podium, that's why David's saying right there, but please, just until somebody calls on you. Uh, thank you for cooperation, Mesa, go ahead, please. Let's continue with the report, I think a lot more questions are gonna be answered with your report, please.
Let's do it. So, the gradual implementation, um, we're such a huge district, we know from the learning labs, we've learned a lot already, and we continue to learn every single day is a new lesson, it always is in education, but especially right now. And so what you're looking at here is, is a suggested gradual implementation model, where we start with, we get the pre-K preschoolers to k, to third grade, or just kindergarten to third grade. So we get them to, get them into school, we work out those kinks, we do our best to implement with a social distancing and following all the protocols that we have in place. And then over time, we use that. We, we look at that model, just like we've been watching what's happening with learning labs, we see how our rates are, we see how the, the mitigation plan is working, um, and what needs adjusting, and then we gradually may add fourth and fifth grade. Um, the option is, another option could be that, actually, uh, David Higgins shared this with me, it was today or yesterday, I don't know, it all blurs. But that maybe when we add fourth and fifth grade in, we could consider adding sixth and ninth grade in, because those are in different buildings. And so that was just another idea, um, so you gradually add fourth and fifth, and then you add sixth and ninth, cuz those are transition years. And then, over time, you add in seventh and eighth and in tenth to twelfth grade. Now, um, as we discussed earlier, if we would be keeping a close eye and having our weekly meetings and doing all, taking all the steps that we have all along to see what's working, what needs adjusting, uh, David and Jane and I probably talk, uh, multiple times a day about things that are not working and that need fixing, and that, hey, by the way, this is working great, I'm glad we worked that out. Um, you know, on the first day of learning labs, we got feedback, and by the second day, we got positive feedback of the concerns that we discussed that first morning. And so the gradual implementation really allows us to do, um, a more effective job of implementing the mitigation plan. This is a question that continually comes up, and so I just went ahead and included it as a slide as far as teachers' reporting requirements. Um, and I'll say, I'll, I'll speak to this a little bit more later down in the presentation, but that, um, our, our teachers, cuz they're all one union, so if we were to follow the gradual implementation, we would want, if the pre-K to three, or the kindergarten to three teachers are reporting five days a week, then we would want all the teachers to report and use that time for learning labs. As a union, we want to support the union doing things, um, if, if, we don't wanna say that half the teachers report five days a week and the other half don't. And there's, learning labs could be, you know, they're going well now, so we can keep looking at that, and so this is a question that comes up frequently, what are my reporting requirements as a teacher? Um.
And that was discussed with our committee that deals with the learning labs with, um.
Yeah, that Sue Laddick is on there, Jane Mazza, and Micah Salie, myself, Dr. Malak, and maybe one other person. Um, and then also, as I get emails all the time from teachers saying, do you think you're gonna have more virtual learning program teachers, you're gonna need them, if you need them, you know, I'm interested. And, um, I always say, I anticipate that we will need them, because there's gonna be some families that don't, are not ready for in-person. And so we're keeping track of those people that are interested, because we were successfully able to staff the virtual learning program with all teachers that volunteered. And God bless them, because they really, I mean, God bless all the teachers, but the virtual learning program really took that on, and it's a new program, and there was a lot to work out, and there still is a lot to work out.
And they would, they, we made an agreement with them, and that was part of it, to give flexibility with staffing in that building, meaning they could go back the following year as long as it was there. Secondly, their work location is flexible. That was another in- incentive that we did, and then once we did that, we received more, and we worked with Jane to kinda come up with that incentive, so.
Question. Of course, we wanna support unions, and I guess my thought is, we don't wanna pen one teacher against another, I understand, I get that. But if we're making that decision as a board, uh, please tell me, why do we need more people in that building? Uh, especially now after, you know, four or five weeks of delivering instruction. If I'm a teacher, I've got my life in order now, the first two, three weeks was chaotic. Why do I need to report if I have my setup at home, everything's going good, uh, I talked to many, many parents this past weekend, and there's like, our teachers, first two weeks was crazy for everybody, everybody, but now everything's kinda settled in, they, I mean, note after note, the teachers were amazing, the teacher was amazing, that's all I heard, so why we, would we wanna disrupt that? And more important to me, why do we wanna bring in more people into the building unless we absolutely have to?
I, I'll comment, just, um, I mean, technically, we don't have, elementary would, because if ele, if it's in-person, then the, all the elementary would have to, other than the virtual, because you need them in the buildings. Because you're gonna have students every day, um, because they'll, they'll have their A cohort and their B cohort, so elementary would.
Sure, sure.
Um, it, it was a, just kind of a joint decision that we made that, um, you know, uh, our recommendation, however you wanna say, um, you know, we could have more students in learning labs, basically, was the justification. Um, and really, the truth too was, was Ms. Ali Bezi said, is, you know, you would, you could make that decision, but you're gonna have half the staff in there and have, you know, potentially, you would have half not, based on the numbers of elementary, so that, that is a possibility, but when we discussed it, that was kinda what our committee came to an understanding, but we're, I mean, obviously, if the board wants to go in another direction with that, we'd be open to, to those conversations, to see what we, we could do, and I mean, we, I know with the unions too, though, we've, we've kept it very positive and working collaboratively with them, so that was kind of a joint decision. But you're right, I mean, you could, now, elementary, though, you would have no choice, el- elementary would have to.
No, I get that part, yeah, I get that part, but if we're saying.
But the secondary, you could, you.
At, at any, any, bringing in any level, everybody has to come in, so let's say we're gonna go ahead and bring in the first, second, and third graders in. Why are we bringing the fourth and fifth grade teachers, and by the way, the secondary and the high school? I think that's something, a decision that can be made at the building, but that's, I'm just one person, I'm just, I guess, me personally, I would wanna limit, uh,
Sure, no, I get it, and I, and I get that point of view.
Trustee Petrichoff, go ahead.
Well, I, I've got a question after this, but just to comment on that.
Please.
My assumption would be, and I have no understanding of, of this personally, but my assumption would be that there might be teachers in the elementary who are coming back, who are uncomfortable about it, and they're saying, why am I being penalized, I've gotta come back in the building and the upper L is getting a break on this, cuz you're not bringing them back yet? And they might find it a fairness issue, I don't know. I'm just stating that that's a potential.
I get that, I get that.
Where, where they, they might say, we're, we're the ones ge, taking the, you know, risk, and everybody else gets to stay safe, because you've made a decision not to open everything up.
I get that, I mean, obviously, we wanna support our unions and know, uh, one life is not worth more than the other, I, I, I received all those phone calls, we've had those debates, but, uh, again, if, you know, if we don't have students coming in, for example, at Dearborn High.
I, I just don't wanna start pitting, pitting.
Yeah.
Teachers against teachers, depending on what they're teaching. Now, I did have one question.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah. We would still need them.
I know, I know, there's gonna be learning labs still continuing and what have you, but that could be a decision, if we give the flexibility to the administrator of that building, that could be a decision where logistically, that principal, he or she can figure that out, instead of saying, every teacher needs to come into the building. But okay, I mean, you had a question.
Okay, and now, I did have a question. Uh, the virtual learning, um, community, is it mostly, um, comprised of elementary students, or is there, is there a lot of upper L teachers who are in their, that mix as well? I mean, what's the ratio?
So we have not separated out secondary into a formal virtual learning program yet. Um, and we were really, really fortunate that we did not, because we learned so much through the elementary process. Um, and we wanna make it as least disruptive as possible for everyone, for the teachers and for the kids. And so for secondary, it could look different, because now everyone's getting trained on everything they need to know, so it could just be that they have, um, I'm a ninth grade teacher and I have three sections that are face-to-face, and then I have two virtual sections. And so, um, we have not separated and said, okay, these are the virtual learning program kids for secondary, like we did for elementary.
Yeah.
Okay, so how many, how many out of the five thousand students are secondary versus elementary?
That's a good question.
Secondary? I would have to check, I don't know off the.
Fatimi could probably get us that if she's watching, she could send us a message.
I was gonna say, someone will text me in just a minute, I'm sure.
I can share with you, Trustee Petrichoff, I asked a question, uh, last week, uh, and I was surprised. Because I, you know, because when we sent out the surveys.
Oh, yeah, I did send you.
When we sent out, you probably have those on your.
Yeah.
When we sent out those surveys to the elementary, non-virtual academy, I was assuming that probably a third of the five thousand was elementary, that wasn't the case, that number was a lot lower.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It was more the.
It was, from what I, from what I understood from Dr. Malak, yes, it was more in the secondary.
I'm, I'm surprised as well.
I was surprised, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I can get, we can get like, more specific numbers for you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah, they gave me, I think I texted you the number you.
Cuz like, that kinda tells you where the teachers are at too, as.
They don't have it, unfortunately.
Coming back into the elementary versus.
The secondary.
The secondary. Okay, thank you.
I'd just say too, the secondary for a reason too, because it'd be hard, secondary is hard to staff.
Seven hundred and forty-three elementary teachers.
What was that?
We have seven hundred and forty-three elementary teachers.
Seven hundred, okay, that's it.
To- total?
Yeah, for elementary.
For elementary?
Wow. Okay.
Twenty-four, seven twenty-four, sorry.
How come I wanna keep saying Dr. Moser? Go ahead, uh, Trustee Moser?
Uh, I think if, if, if a teacher is not required to provide in-person learning, and they're all online for that day, I think it should be up to the discretion of the principal to say, you could be working from home today, um, and, and have that as a prior knowledge of the two as an agreement. I think that will also stop as many people as possible in a, in a building.
With the understanding that there's learning labs taking place in that building, so you'd have to schedule some staff coming in. Thank you. Mason, the floor is yours again.
I need a little clarification.
Trustee McDonald?
Mason, the number that you gave of seven forty-three.
Yeah, I, I have to correct it, trustee.
I misunderstood. Is, is that elementary teachers, or is that elementary students that are enrolled in the V L P program?
Thank you, trustee, I was just, I was just going, going to say that. It's seven hundred and twenty-four elementary students that are enrolled in the V L P program at this time, but I don't know if that's the number you wanted, Trustee Petrichoff, is it?
Yeah, I wanted to see what the, yeah, it does help, it does help.
So that's what I say, I was like, is that the number that?
So out of, so it's a majority is the upper L that, that signed into that. Huh.
That was, that was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised.
And the total is approximately five thousand, correct?
Yeah, around that.
Yes.
Well, initially, it was five thousand, then what happened is, remember how we waited, uh, because we were trying to give the parents a lot of options and flexibility? A lot of times when the parents went and then talked to the principal, uh, or the staff, they then opted out, they changed their mind, and we allowed it, so we were trying to be as flexible, so that did drop down, I believe, maybe below four thousand.
Oh, okay.
Um, but again, what'll happen is if we do have in-person, and, and again, it's a gauge, you know, you're gonna have more, they're gonna wanna get in.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do our best, and that's why she's saying we would need the, the teachers, but we, you know, the staffing is huge with this, this change that we did, and I give credit to Mason N H R, because it was done within, and the reason we waited was because we were trying to give flexibility to parents. We were trying to accommodate the parents, so that's why we waited as long as we could, I don't know if you recall, we put a deadline, and then we changed it, and we just kept extending it. And that was to try to accommodate parents, even though it was hard on our staffing, it really was. So I thank the union, I thank Mason and, and, and the teachers that volunteered and the principals. I also thank the principals, cuz what ended up happening was, you know, several staff that volunteered, then they had to like, uh, they weren't in their building anymore, so they lost their staff. I know one principal that lost, you know, three or four, but we tried to keep it voluntary, and that's why we did that way.
This isn't easy on anyone, that's for sure.
No, but they all worked hard, I mean, that's where you said team, the team really came together, I, you know, um, with such a staffing change that, uh, and that's why with secondary, we didn't, because it would be complicated, if we did open secondary, then you may have some online and some stu, you know, they could be, the students just, they don't come in, and some are online, and there's instruction going on, we brainstormed this, where you, and we know other districts are doing that, so. You, you know, you don't necessarily have to separate them out, other than the fact that those students will never come in in person, cuz they opted for the online fully.
So I have Dr. Chokol and Shannon Peterson and Fatimi Faraj giving me the numbers here, thank you very much to the three of them. Um, so there are ninety-five hundred elementary students, and that includes the V L P students. And then we have, um, seven hundred, of that, seven hundred and twenty-four of them are V L P students. So seven hundred and twenty-four of the ninety-five hundred elementary students are V L P students. Currently, we have one thousand three hundred and fifty-four secondary students that have opted for the V L P program.
So that's all the V L Ps do, and while that's even, it's only a couple thousand, something must be missing here.
There is a memo that, um, was sent to the board on September fifteenth with all the detailed numbers. The numbers do continue to change just slightly, because if somebody wants to opt in, we're allowing them to do so in elementary, and if somebody says, I don't want V L P anymore, we're allowing them to go.
Into.
Back to school, or like, back to not, not back to school physically, but.
That's only a couple thousand.
Yeah, that's only a couple thousand.
It's not minor changes compared to five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was initially, it was close to five thousand that enrolled.
So we started with like five thousand kids that opted in, and then the principals called every single family to make sure, do you understand the difference, what's happening here?
What you're opting into, yeah.
We were really concerned, we didn't want parents opting in for V L P, and then this, then we started online, and then the parent, many parents would think like, well, why, what, what did I opt into when the whole district's going online anyways, and so the, the, um, principals contacted every single parent and said, and explained it again, do you understand what this is, do you understand? But, you know, like, had the conversation, because that's who knows the parents the best, are the administrators and the teachers, um, and so then the number.
You said we gotta report on this?
There was something.
A memo, I don't recall seeing it.
I don't recall seeing this, I'm shocked at this news, to be honest with you.
Yeah, this is, this is a lot different than what I had in my mind all this time.
What did the principals tell the parents when they called them?
They just said, do, we just wanna make sure that you understand what the virtual learning program means, that this is.
Versus, everybody's gonna be starting online at the beginning, and then you have the option.
Yeah, like, do you understand that there's a chance that if things improve in the health of the community, that we, that Dearborn Schools will go back to school, and if you opt in for the virtual learning program, your, your child.
Is gonna be there.
Is, is, you're, you're choosing, you're saying like, even if Dearborn Schools goes back to school in person, I don't want my children going in person.
That's not what they want, yeah.
And that was the misunderstanding that they found.
Did the principals tell the parents that if the district goes back into the classroom, you might lose that option to return to that building?
I don't know for sure.
That's very troublesome, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Because to lose, because we, we heard it was shut down to five thousand, then it was additions, and we've had these conversations. I thought, I still thought like, oh, wow, seven twenty-four out of the five thousand, I'm shocked.
Yeah, that.
So now to hear this, this is very disturbing, to be honest with you, because if there was discussions like that, because I know the teachers didn't volunteer right away, because they were told, you're gonna lose your spot in the building, then we changed that rule, and now if parent, you know.
No, we've always told, we always told teachers from the beginning that their current building would remain their home building for staffing next year.
We didn't say that from the beginning.
Yeah, we did, the thing, the part that we changed was the reporting requirement.
Yeah, I did see that, I did see that you changed that, yeah.
We changed it, but we didn't say that in the beginning.
No, we said that in the beginning, but what we changed was the reporting requirement for teachers, that you don't have to report in person at all.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, these numbers, these numbers are way different.
These numbers are just way out of whack compared to what I had in mind, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have to, I'm glad I asked that question.
I'm glad you asked that question too.
You, you envisioned much height, greater numbers, right?
Well, not envision, we were told it was five thousand plus.
Or we missed the memo, one or the other, we missed the memo.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can get, uh, Shannon or someone after to give us clarification as to what happened with the enrollment.
Yeah, how, how it changed so dramatically.
I would say, but I know, as far as in the school, though, they can't, they would have to, students are, are, have the right, you, you know, you can't say that they couldn't
Come back, yeah.
Come in the school, because if they, if they reside in that area, they would, you know, it's the right of the parent.
They, they have, yeah.
So what was appealing to the teachers, what changed, uh, President Barry, was the, the part that changed?
But I don't know if someone may have said it.
When we didn't get very many people that volunteered for it, then we said, there's no reporting requirement. So you don't ever have to come in the building.
For the teachers.
For the teachers, so that is what made it really appealing, but from the beginning, we did always say, you stay on your homeschool roster for staffing. And so next year, you're counted as part of, if it's, if Bryant's your school that you're teaching at right now, because that's really important to teachers, they have a relationship with that building.
And they wanna go back to normal.
And they wanna go back to that building. Yeah, so that part, we, we stayed, we, from the beginning, we always said, that's your homeschool, but the piece of.
But the piece about reporting, that made it a lot more attractive.
That makes sense. But I'm still, I'm gonna say one more time, then you continue. We were told that there was 5,000 students plus, and we couldn't get enough teachers to sign in. Then we solved that problem, so I figured that we're still around the 5,000. Matter of fact, when I asked a question a couple of weeks ago about, you know, can we get a breakdown? And I remember that was, it was under 800 in elementary. I'm thinking, wow, 800 out of 5,000, so that must have been forty-two hundred in, uh, which, which kind of didn't make sense, but hey, these are the numbers. So this is, unless we missed a memo, which is possible.
Yeah, my, my, yeah.
Okay.
All right, we, we know it now.
So I have a, I have a principal texting. I will just share, it says that we told them if they wanted to return, they would not be promised that the students, like, if I'm the parent, they told the parents, if your children want to return and say, we don't want the virtual learning program anymore, but you've made this commitment that if the classroom and your kid's a third grader at McDonald Elementary and third grade at McDonald Elementary is pretty full, then we'll find you a third grade spot, but it might not be at McDonald Elementary.
That's exactly what I was saying. So I was just making that up. One of the parents I was talking to, that's exactly what they said.
Oh, so when you said the homeschool, you weren't talking about the teachers, you were talking about the students?
Whatever, yeah. It's like, okay, you're gonna lose your spot here. So I'm like, oh, wow. So who, 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 who put that directive out there to have the principals call after we had this 5,000 students volunteer for Virtual Academy?
That, that we did, we did get notified that they were going to try to clarify, because there was so much confusion with the parents and the principals did, um, start to be proactive. I do remember hearing about that and that they were going to try to ensure that the parents knew what they were signing on to when we first started this. I don't know what the conversation, and, and we were also informed about, um, the students potentially not being able to, that, that was in board briefs too. Not, not being.
What was in board briefs, I'm sorry?
That, that, that the, the students would not necessarily go back to their homeschool if, if they opt back out of virtual learning.
So we put it out.
And the classroom was full.
So we put that out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the principals made sure to clarify it.
Okay.
They, they.
Shannon, yeah, Shannon's saying it was nine fifteen where she clarified the numbers.
Board request for information.
And then she put it in again, or she's putting it.
Okay, I, I must have missed that. Sorry, Shannon, I'm, I'm trying to read everything.
It's a lot, we sent you a lot.
She put it where, I'm sorry?
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen, put, put it where?
Shannon, was that, that was in board briefs.
Board request for information.
Yeah.
It was, I just, she said she just put it in again.
I must.
So what was the drop again, from 5,000 to forty, to 4,000? So about a thousand people changed.
Five thousand to 2,000.
Two thousand.
Now it's down to 2,000.
It's not 4,000, it's 5,000 to 2,000. 2,050, I'm sorry. It's still not.
Here, you want me to add eight, seven, 2,078?
So what are the proposals?
Ready?
We should have brought you a chair for this presentation.
No, I shouldn't wear heels today.
Well, we're sorry about, with the numbers, you know, the, like you said, everything has been changing so closely and there's so much information.
And my apologies for missing, if, if it got sent, I, I missed it.
So we will include that in the next presentation to clarify as much as possible. Um, this PowerPoint was part of, uh, what we discussed last, last month as well. And it's the district indicators of things that we're looking at to resume in-person learning. So I won't spend too much time on it, um, but I just want to touch on it. Um, and now we can add to this, this spreadsheet, the Dearborn metrics, once we get those. Dearborn metrics coming soon.
And that's important, because that's what everybody is asking about.
Yes, that's what everybody really wants to know about. So we're really excited that that's coming soon.
Because we seem to be an outlier in those numbers.
Okay, and so K5 or P5 Blended Model Option 1, this hasn't changed from the last time we met. There's, um, dividing the students into two groups. And you have one group of students come in the morning and you have one group of students come in the afternoon. And when the group, when I, if I'm in the first group and I go to school in the morning, then in the afternoon, I have asynchronous learning. The challenges of this option is that it's really tolling on the transportation department. And if our goal is to transition to having secondary return as a blended hybrid model as well, when secondary returns, then it's gonna be very difficult to provide the transportation four times a day for elementary. Cause it's driving, picking the kids up, dropping them off, taking the first batch of kids home, picking up the next group, bringing them in, turning around, dropping them off, and then trying to work secondary into that. So we recognize that that could be, um, problematic down the line as we continue adding, um, the grade levels to in-person. And then also disinfecting touchpoints is always a challenge when you have students in the building more than four hours. Uh, pre-K to third or fifth grade, the model option number two is dividing the students into two groups. And then you have group, one group, um, go to school in person all day on Monday, Wednesday and every other Friday. And you have the second go, group go to school Tuesdays, Thursdays and every other Friday. The challenges for this option is disinfecting touchpoints is required, um, and highly recommended in stage, in phase five. So right now it's required. Um, and that's difficult to do. It's possible with all hands on deck, but it's difficult. And then the teacher's ability to provide asynchronous student support is limited when you have the teacher there teaching in person five days a week to different groups of kids. And so, and the next option that we'll look at for teachers, it's really gonna highlight that, you know, we recognize wholeheartedly that our teachers have done what, I swear, what no other profession has done as far as they have learned a new learning management system that typically would take six months plus to roll out and train and properly train. And they have rise to the occasion. There are still snags. Um, they are working harder and longer hours than they ever have worked. And so we are looking at that they need some type of prep time, because they put just as much energy into their asynchronous lessons for students when, that they're preparing during the time when they're not, when they're, for the students that they're not teaching in person or zooming with, however it ends up being. And so it's something really to consider that teachers really need. And we know that teachers go above and beyond for the students. And if we give them some support with the prep time that they get, it could be a real, uh, it's, it's badly needed.